Verify, you are live.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think this is the one that does the audio recording and she has not shown how to do that, so I don't know, why don't you push on?
She told me they were ready. No, I don't want them. She told me they were ready, I'm assuming just hit play. She said double click and then we're here now.
Okay.
We're live now?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's six o'clock, could we all rise to the pledge allegiance required?
The pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to have a guest presenter tonight at 6:05 on this computer. Colin Clark has said that he would zoom in on us and answer questions. So I'm going to take a few things out of order. We can dispense with the minutes of the meeting in the next couple of minutes, I hope. And then I'm going to move the discussion of the shoreline zone issue up and move the bylaw discussion to a later date. And we have two other things that we have to do. When the time comes on the new business, the planning board has to have a discussion amongst itself and pass a resolution or a note or something to the selectmen telling them our position on both the shoreline zoning ordinance changes, which will become as a warrant article, and the citizens petition for the airport, which we've also had a public hearing on. We're going to discuss that. You as citizens have opportunities at both public hearings to speak your case. And so this will be a time when the planning board will do its due diligence without input from the public at that point. So let's get through the minutes of the meeting, previous meeting. Is there any additions, violations, corrections?
I didn't see anything, no.
You didn't see anything, or you haven't seen it?
I read it, I didn't say it wrong. All it's trying to make it.
Okay. Okay, will entertain a motion?
Hi Buddy?
Motion, accept the minute.
Okay, so Bill.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Geniuses? Cast? So now... You said just click it twice?
Yes. Does it show that he's there?
Found him, yeah. By the way, they gave us a nice new gal.
I have to get your cursor, where's the cursor? I don't see the cursor, Matt.
I've never used it.
Launch meeting here.
She said double click.
Nothing. I haven't seen anything yet.
This recording there?
It's not though.
This is audio here.
No, it's a Zoom meeting.
You're doing the Zoom person?
And we're trying to, you know, the cursor's on the launch meeting.
I called him, texted him, and just emailed him, and no reply yet. Other than he confirmed earlier.
I gotta cancel it. He's close to us.
I... At three o'clock I asked for 6:05 and he said not a problem.
He's fine.
Move it up to the... Anybody have any hate year olds that can help us?
And we move on and hopefully he'll come back, relax, relax.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the meeting open in Zoom?
It says launch the meeting, we're pushing the button, but it's not changing the screen at all.
Are we supposed to watch it or he's supposed to?
Well, he's supposed to come on.
He's going to send another call.
So is, are we hosting, are you hosting?
We're hosting.
We're hosting?
Yes. Oliver sent him the link, he received the link.
So then he's got to come on before you do?
Yes.
Right.
Maybe just move on and...
Go back.
I have three ways to communicate with him, I've tried all three.
All right. There's something we can do that are probably quick. One of the things that we have to accomplish tonight is to set a date for the floodplain ordinance. This is a public hearing that will be presented by the planning board as the last to have for the public to make comments on the floodplain ordinance. We need to get this done and get it ready for a warrant article for the town meeting. So we need 14 days' notice before we can have the meeting. So it would have to be sometime after 24, after the 24th, end of June sometime. I suspect this one may not take very long and may not be very contentious. So we could do it at the next regularly scheduled...
Planning board?
Planning board meeting.
July 10th.
July 10th. If that was agreeable. And that will give us plenty of time to get the notice out.
Okay.
Works away.
Okay, so we agree?
July 10th?
July 10th.
For the regular, regular planning board meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, so 6:00 PM?
Yes, we'll hold that and then we'll hold a planning board meeting.
In this room or downstairs?
I think we can probably do it in this room. The last one which we thought was going to be loaded was 21 people. And I, we can get 21 in here. But I don't know, see, there's just a few changes, small changes in the ordinance, which I actually haven't read or studied yet because we've been inundated with this.
Okay, so July 10th at 6:00 PM. We'll start with the public hearings at floodplain ordinance.
Yep.
We will all get information on it before the meeting?
Yes.
About the floodplain ordinance?
Yes. Did we send out the floodplain, Matt?
I will. Colin said the link will not allow me to join, it says I need a commercial account. I don't know.
Can we put him on a phone and talk with him that way? It'd be your phone. Over a microphone.
Face time.
I guess, let me...
I'm surprised there's no phone in this room. So we got that stuff then?
That's done.
Susan asked about the material, the floodplain ordinance itself.
Yes.
So people can...
I will leave that out.
Okay.
But it's an ordinance, I mean, I'm not going to print five ordinance.
No, it's PDF, right?
Yes. Remind me with everybody's email and I'll forward it on.
What about public, don't, you know, the public wants to review it, where are they going to have access to?
Tell them we'll put it on the town website, I'm sure.
Yeah.
That'll be an easy one.
Yeah, and just say that it's available at the town office.
Are we going to indicate we have changes?
You know, I don't know that they did that.
We should, unless you have to re-pollack.
Twice. You've got to read it side by side.
It's a big document.
She should print it out or have it printed.
I can tell a little bit about the floodplain thing. I'm sorry? I can enlighten you a little bit about this floodplain thing. That will be fine to do at the public hearing.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea. Send this guy the YouTube channel one.
If this connection is made, the plan is for the board to have a discussion with Colin Clark about the ordinance. He's seen it and read it and everything else. And I'm going to invite the members of the committee that actually wrote the report to come up and ask him also questions through the board to give us a chance to try and solve some issues that may need to be done.
Okay, here it is.
It says he's in the Zoom, but it does not appear anyone else is there. I'd rather use that than my personal phone.
Sure. Wait, there's something going on, can you fast it up?
Cancel the update. Does anyone know what the login is for your free counter? Because you're not actually logged into your account.
Okay.
That's someone else's, I don't have much personal theater.
Rhodey maybe? Yeah, right. Try that. Well, that's why.
Hey, we need the password for the computer, or for the Zoom, for the Zoom. Do you know what?
What's in the email that is in there?
It says, what's it say?
Can you hear me? People sitting home?
Whoops, I was calling. Hey. I don't really think the Zoom thing's going to work out. We could put you on speakerphone. We livestream YouTube and then we use, we've got a Zoom account set up for you, but it's just not working. There was a second.
We could look at the livestream, here it is.
We're on now.
Yeah, so without that, I can't. The livestream is working. I had it on my tablet, so.
So it doesn't work?
We don't have our login for the account.
Okay, so we're livestreaming on YouTube, essentially, and I guess we just use speaker? Speaker?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just going to put in speaker, that'll go.
Might all want to get in front row? We could put another microphone. Yes.
Something else to get through.
And then we'll ask questions.
Okay, are you there? All right.
Just put him up by the hand for the microphone.
That bends. You can bend it down, so.
Colin, can you hear us?
Colin, you still there?
Yeah, I can hear you just fine.
Okay.
Colin, I'm Bob Pratt, the chairman of the planning board. And we're disappointed not to get you on Zoom, but we're very happy to have you here. As you know, we're rewriting our ordinances, updating it. And to that end, we've been, had a public hearing and the committee has presented its findings and the town has had an opportunity to do that. We now have to, the planning board, make a recommendation to the selectmen to either put in, it's either a not to pass or to pass for a warrant article. Many of the members of that committee are here tonight also. I'd like to let you answer some questions from the planning board members and from that committee. Would that work?
Sure.
Great, fine.
All right. Does any of the planning board members have questions for Colin? Well, I'll start off then. One of the issues in the present or prepared revision is that we have two state parks in the town and the state parks are listed as resource protected. The entire piece of property. We've got a letter from the state, I think more than one, at least one, but two, I think, informing us that the control of the state parks is through the DLM, isn't it? State parks, anyway. And that they have complete control over it and they want us to remove the resource protected zone from their property. Do you have comments on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, that seems legitimate to me. I mean, if it's a state park controlled by, you know, Department of Conservation or Bureau of Parks and Lands, whoever has the control over it, that seems reasonable. They put protection on it, probably at least, or if operated, then I'm going to assume the controlling zoning ordinance would do, so that seems reasonable.
Okay, now, both of them, I think, have shorefront property, so they would still have the shoreline zone 250 feet. That would be under their control. Well, they would be responsible to the state because it's a state ordinance, isn't it?
Correct. They, they would inherit or take over the responsibility for the controlling zoning aspect of it. In terms of, you know, regulating what they're building, where they're building it, but typically state parks, they're not looking to be building or doing anything down next to the resource anyway. But it would be consistent with other parks that have waterfront.
Yes.
I have a question. Once it is zoned, a state park, are there any restrictions? Is there anything that forbids the state from doing something else on that land?
I, I think to answer that question, we'd be better served to talk to the Department of Conservation that oversees that land. I can tell you that they can't do anything that's going to violate state statute or shoreline zoning. But can they do something different with their land? I assume they can. But a lot of these things are signed into, you know, some sort of conservation easement or some sort of, you know, statement in their deed that it's going to be a certain thing in perpetuity, but I just wouldn't be able to comment directly on these two pieces of property because I don't know what their, you know, level of overseen's is or what their plans into the future would be. I could absolutely talk to them and they might be able to talk more informative on it. It's just not things that I oversee. I know it's not in a D E P perspective. But what I can say is that you have to follow state statute and state laws. So it's not like they could turn this thing into an amusement park or something like that and, you know, violate zoning laws. They would still have to follow the laws of the state.
But if they had a concession stand that was outside the 250-foot boundary, they could set up a concession stand or collect tickets or increase the parking lot or build nature trails or things like that at their discretion?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Okay. Other questions?
I guess my question would be, a resource protection zone or district was set up to protect a resource, right?
Correct.
So take the airport, for example, and the museum. And I'll say, there is no resource protection, no resource to protect on that property and we have it in resource protection. I think that's a mistake.
I, I would, I would agree with that take, not because it's not worth protecting, but because the language in your ordinance doesn't match what's on the ground.
Okay, so that is a correction that should be made if we were going to adjust this document that has been produced by the committee?
Correct, that's like, I don't know, I've had this conversation with so many people at this point, but yeah, I mean, if, if the town decides that they want to put more restrictive conditions on those two properties, then the ordinance needs to be changed to reflect why? Because right now your ordinance is talking about areas within 250 feet of protected natural resources. And none of the resources that are on that property currently are on the list that would make it resource protection or even within the shoreline zone for that. I, I would, if it was me, I, I would create something new instead of trying to stuff it into the shoreline zoning ordinance. I would, you know, create a business district where certain criteria need to be met to do whatever they want to do. Something along those lines. If not, you're going to really have to work really diligently on this ordinance to try to facilitate having those two pieces of property being governed under your shoreline zoning ordinance because the only resources that I'm aware of on the property are some wetlands, that most of which are forested wetlands, none of which are greater than 10 acres. And to be a regulated resource as a wetland under the shoreline zoning laws, it has to be a wetland greater, 10 acres or greater, non-forested. So that means open water type wetlands, you know, scrub shrub type wetlands, cattail type wetlands, those types of wetlands, rather than the garden variety wetlands that's located basically everywhere in the state of Maine, a forest wetland.
Other questions?
I have, I have one. At, at the bottom of Ash Point Drive, there's a piece of land that's owned by the town of Owlshead and it's zoned commercial. I would like to recommend that we make that a resource protection.
Is that something for, for me? Because I, I mean, I, I don't have the authority to say, yes, you should do that. That, that sounds like a town building thing. And obviously, if the town is considering it, then you can.
Well, I think, what I'm, okay, I guess.
To make sure it meets the criteria.
Yeah, I, I think what I'm suggesting is that it go under one, you know, that will go to, to the town, neither. It makes absolutely no sense to have a commercial.
Would you entertain the possibility of having it considered a recreational zone?
I guess so, I really don't know what that means.
Well, is that the piece of property that they wanted to build a rampway and launch boats and stuff?
Yeah, that's, that's what it is, exactly.
One of the things that we have in our zoning ordinance, not shoreline zoning ordinance, but our regular ordinance, is a recreational zone. And it's defined, but it's not used anywhere. If we could ma, marry these two ordinances together and have a recreational zone, we could incorporate these two properties that the state gives and that would give them the authority to do whatever it was, but would give us a zone, a name for zone. But it also would look at all of our other parks that we have in town and place those in a thing. And then we could develop criteria for a recreational zone. And it could be created in the shoreline zone as well as in the other ordinance.
If it's a recreation, if we do that and it becomes a recreational zone and it is owned by the town, does that mean the town can sell it for a commercial use? Because right now it's...
You'd have to ask an attorney that.
Yeah. I mean, I'm trying to see what the value is of recreational zone. I mean, I haven't looked at it.
You'd have to, we'd have to develop... Colin, do you have a definition of a recreational zone at all?
Um, no, that's, that's a district that is outside the bounds of the Chapter 1000 guidelines.
Okay.
So, no, we don't, we don't have anything for that.
Then we would have to...
I can't say that in Chapter 1000, there is talk of recreational areas. Let's see if we can pull that up to see if there's anything that would be helpful. So in, in Chapter 1000, there's areas that are identified as general development. Those are usually more of commercial, industrial, intensive areas like that, but it also has a spot here where it says intensive recreational activities or a mix such as, not limited to the following, areas devoted to intensive recreational development activities such as, but not limited to, amusement parks, racetracks, car rentals. So I don't think that's really the recreational activities you guys are talking about. I was also, you guys were talking about digging out and launching boats and fishing and piloting and that kind of stuff.
And we have two or three islands that are protected by the Main Coast Heritage Trust. And they could also be in a recreational zone. But that would be a design to protect them without restricting them any more than they want to be restricted.
And, and why couldn't we call it a resource protected? I mean, we have that and that's, that's restricted.
Yes.
Get it out of commercial.
Yes.
That's what I was about to say.
Okay.
Well, that piece of property, I was just talking about.
I would say if, if something goes into resource protection, that's the highest level of protection for any piece of property within the state of Maine. So that would mean no development inside 250 feet of the resource. No boat landings, no boat launches, no, that means something. Basically, inside 250 is, and no flies, only could go down there and, and recreate in terms of, you know, hunting and fishing and hiking and things of that sort, but you wouldn't be able to develop it.
That's the point. That's the point.
That's just something to consider.
Yeah, I mean, right now it has a ramp and people take kayaks down there. And that's it, that's the use, basically. We're just going down there and throwing stones in the water. But to, for it to become a commercial zone, I mean, to develop commercially or even recreationally would be really offensive to all people that live in that area.
Well, that piece of property that she's talking about, it's only 50 feet, I think, square. I know you think it qualifies for any kind of resource protection because you'd be penalizing every house within 250 feet of that lot.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
You mean, they couldn't add to their homes?
Right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, good point.
Well, it's pretty developed.
With it being only a small lot, a 50-foot lot, it's not developable in, developable, right?
Anyway, there's nothing we can do with that.
The only you can do is access to the local people.
No value.
No value at all. And the only reason it's commercial is because it was a bayside on it at one point. And when they went around town and had to put lots in commercial, they picked that bayside. The bayside was long gone. I mean, it could be changed, it's back to a residential, you know. But I mean, nobody's ever going to build a gas station on there, is there?
No, I'd like to see it come out of commercial.
Okay. Other questions? Colin, there's a sentence in the new ordinance, it's in green, so it was original Owlshead text. And it says, notwithstanding any word... And it says, notwithstanding any wording to the contrary within the ordinance, the designation of Resource Protection District is removed from all of Owlshead with the exception of, and then it says C 6 through 9, and they're listed.
Correct.
Is that spot zoning?
It's not a spot zoning, but it's contradictory. The sentence says that there is no areas in Owlshead that are resource protection. And then immediately says except for the following.
That's correct.
And they, I, that's unnecessary language. It's confusing. I wouldn't recommend having that kind of language in there. That gets in front of a lawyer or a judge. I'm sure they would have a field day with it. I mean, it's nice that you guys list out which properties are in resource protection. That's something that a lot of communities do, but none of them have that language in front of it that says there's no resource protection in Owlshead except for the following. You should just say, if you're gonna list out all the properties that are in RP, that meet the designation of RP, I would simply say the following properties located in Owlshead are in resource protection. And get rid of that thing that says there's no resource protection in Owlshead because it contradicts the next part of the sentence, so. And that's something that I've talked about to many people for the last two or three years since we've been having these discussions. That that language is not, not the best, not something that I would encourage anybody to put in their ordinance. It just is confusing and not necessary.
Thank you. Other questions? We have one more that was written on our agenda, and that is great ponds and rivers. And apparently, the authors selected the state text, which includes great ponds and rivers. And then they put a qualifying statement in that says, no, it says currently there are no great ponds in the town of Owlshead. Currently, there are no rivers in the town of Owlshead. My question is, should all of that language be removed to prevent both confusion and to simplify the ordinance?
Yeah, so within your draft ordinance, does it say great ponds in other places?
It says, it's using your language. Watered lands with great ponds or rivers are considered to be part of the great pond or river. In, in paragraphs, Section 13.
I think your ordinance is online. Let me bring it up.
It's, yeah, Section 13A under Resource Protection District, A, 1A, areas within 250 feet and stuff.
All right, so... And that was the resource protection.
Yes.
Language, what?
Section 13.
13.
13, establishing district.
Section 13.
Section 13, yes. 1A.
1A, yeah.
It's down to the Department of, IFNW Department, December 31, 2008. And then it starts, for the purposes of this paragraph, wetlands associated with great ponds and rivers shall be characterized by non-forested wetland vegetation and hydro soils. And on and on and on. And then it goes on to say that we don't have any of those.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that doesn't necessarily have to be in there. As you go further down in your document, though, like when you get to Section 15B, so I guess it just talks about high waterline water area, okay. Let's see. You have been termed great ponds in at least your old ordinance eight different times. You have the one that you referenced, and four of those, five of those happened there. And then in the note where it's talking about where NERC permit is required, it's in there, which is fine. And then it's talking, it mentions it again in the special exception section where they're talking about when someone can build in resource protection if they don't own any property outside of RP. So, but no, the section you're talking about, I mean, it doesn't necessarily need to be there. It's not hurting anything, but it's definitely not adding anything to conversation.
Thank you. Any other board questions? We would like to, Richard, if your committee would like to come up and ask questions. Let's put this, we're gonna move you to the podium. You should be able to talk with him and record it too. Is that my con?
Hello, Colin. This is Ken Wexler. I've been on the ordinance committee, the shoreline zoning committee. We spoke many times and happy to have the chance to speak to you again. I just want to say one thing, because I told the chairman I would. I want to publicly apologize for what I said last week. I did not mean to infer in any way, shape, or manner that Matt and couldn't talk to Bob, or Bob couldn't talk to him. By the way, it was set up as not what I was referring to. I certainly know after all my years on these boards, what can and cannot be said. So, I apologize for any interference. I wasn't, I don't, I believe anything was proper. Frankly, the only thing I think was improper that, Colin, is you're saying something totally different that you told us time and time again and that you're putting right in. Three years, three and a half years, we worked on this thing. You've approved it. We went over it. We sent you drafts. Stantec talked to you a half a dozen times, trying to get you to change your mind. I think, and my takeaway was, that everybody, to the county's attorney, agreed that the only one who could remove a resource protection zone from the zoning map was the town meeting. We had no ability to do it. We couldn't do it. That's what we were told by our attorneys. That's what the county's attorney didn't tell us, but he wrote us a letter saying that. So, how are we now talking about somehow removing these areas from the resource protection zone? I just don't understand it. It seems like another way around trying to get it off. You know, Les Wolford said, bless the memory, okay, after a five-hour meeting one time, where we're trying to work this out with the county, said, this'll never happen. And he said, let's go to the selectman and have this taken to the town meeting and get it changed. It's been there since 1990. The town wants to take it off, the town can take it off. That's what we all said. We went to the front of the selectman and to a person, they just listened, didn't say a word. My opinion is the county doesn't want it to go to the town meeting because they're afraid they're gonna lose at the county.
That's the question.
So, Colin, what about the fact that you approved this? What about the fact that you told us time and time again that the town of Owlshead is allowed to have a stricter definition than the state? You must have said that a half a dozen times to us. So, I guess that's it. I'll conclude with that, but I just have to say for somebody who puts so much time into this, to see this whole thing fall apart a month before it's going into the, or two months before it's going into the, into the town meeting is a little disheartening. So, if you could answer my question, I'd appreciate it.
And everything you said is fairly accurate. I mean, to remove something from RP, it does need to go to town code. The town can be more restrictive if they choose to be. All of those things are correct. But the thing that I have tried to impress upon everybody at every meeting we've been to is the language and the map have to match. And currently, they don't. So, if you want the airport and the museum to be in resource protection, then you're gonna need to add some language in there that makes it sound. Because right now, there's, in your old ordinance, it's very specific on what you need to do to be in RP. You need to be near a wetland that has inland water, inland water, water habitat. It needs to be a wetland of certain size. It needs to be a steep slope. It needs to be flood, it needs to be, one of those right here. And the reason that it probably has got passed so many times is that sentence that is completely contradictory where it says there's no RP in town except for the following. And like we've said in many of these meetings over the past few years, if you guys want to regulate forested wetlands of a smaller size as resource protection, then you're absolutely available to do that. You just need to write that in your ordinance so you can do it. But then, you need to look at all the other wetlands that are that size, that meet that criteria around the town, that have that same standard, and put all those properties in resource protection. Or you can just do what I've said many times, just create a new zone, just an airport commercial zone, call it anything you want. And then put the regulations you want on those two pieces of property and control the development that way rather than trying to put it into shoreline zone ordinance. Because it just, the words and the map don't match up. And that's the biggest issue that I've stated every time that I went to these meetings. And yes, the town can be more restrictive. They absolutely can. But you need to be consistent with that application. And you need to have the criteria that you've established for something to be in resource protection being applied to all properties that have the same criteria. And I would imagine, this is just shooting from the hip right here, that the town probably does not want to have small forested wetlands be listed in RP. Because the number of resource protection sites in your town would grow from whatever it is now, nine, to 200. Because there's little pockets of forested wetlands all through the community, all through the state. And therefore, that probably isn't gonna be the solution that, it would be the solution that I would be pushing forward if I was on the ordinance committee, or part of the town government, or the common population. I would rather see it be done through its own special zone, airport museum zone, and control the development in that way.
Well, we were...
I'm sorry, there's been some confusion through the years here, but the message has been the same. Everything's gonna match, math and words. And yes, the town can be more restrictive, but you still need to match the math and words.
So, with all respect, okay, with all the times we've talked about it, we were tasked with updating by the state, our ordinances, with the state ordinances. We were tasked to create more wetlands, to make 200 more, to be resource protected. We never talked about that. We never considered that. We were just dealing with the fact that we had a zoning map since 1990 that said, this is a resource protection. And since 1990, the town, not by mistake, willingly kept it in like that. We have an affidavit from the guy who worked on the original thing when they put it in there. And he disagrees that this was a willy-nilly thing. The town worked very, very hard at it. So, maybe the town...
I've never said it's a willy-nilly thing, so those words never came out of hand.
No, they didn't come out of...
I wouldn't think that you guys did it willy-nilly. I wouldn't think that it wasn't done without some thought. Obviously, I believe the town back in 1990 probably wanted to control the development on that property so it didn't get bigger than the town wanted it to be.
You know, it's, stupid, you know, it's not just the size. You know, it's sitting out there on an aquifer. I mean, certainly that needs to be brought into play at some point. Look, we're not gonna change anything right now. We all worked very, very hard. I don't know what the next steps are. This whole thing is a little disheartening and, like I said, a bit of surprise. But hopefully, with good people involved at all sides, we can get it worked out. Oh, one last thing. The reason I believe that ordinance is written is there must have been out of shoreline, resource protected, and they wanna say, okay, those are all out. But we absolutely want to keep that land at the airport in resource protection. That's what the town went and did. And it's been that like that since 1990. So, that's what I got to say. Thank you.
Is there any other members, or you member of that committee? Please come up. Try and direct the questions through the board.
Lynn Chaplin, 15 Gin Coin Road. My first question is, as far as a commercial use that the airport is and with its bigger ability to pollute, whether it's with the CO2 or gas additives, any of the pollutants that are in there, quite a few of them at an airport, would it be logical to have refresh areas, which might be called a wetlands? An area where the, that separates the polluted area from where the wells are on going off the property, off the property of the, and it has already, at one time, there has been leakage from the airport going off. Would it be logical to have areas like that that are for refresh areas, that are separations so that people's wells are protected?
A buffer zone?
Yeah, buffer zone. I mean...
Ask that to Colin.
Okay, I thought you wanted me to...
Well, yes, but...
Okay, Colin, so my question to you is, at the, and in such as an airport, with its higher rate of pollution, with its bigger impact on the town of Owlshead, would it be logical to have areas of refresh areas, such as a wetlands, such as large setbacks, such as all sorts of, you know, areas that, especially around aprons and where planes are parked on a regular basis? Would that be a logical, would that be a logical thing to do?
I mean, it's kind of outside the bounds of shoreline zone, but would it be logical? Sure. But I, I wouldn't use a wetland as a buffer. The wetland serves a very specific purpose of, you know, filtering water and things of that sort. So, typically, when people buffer things, they will start the buffering the upland prior to it getting to the wetland. That way, the wetland isn't the first thing that gets impacted. Because the wetlands is a very sensitive thing and, you know, it is oriented something that are gonna like some of the pollution that you're talking about. So, if you're talking about putting additional buffers around some of these activities or spots where fuel is being spent or things are being parked or something like that, I, yeah, I mean, that's all seems logical. I'm just, I'm just not an airport planner, so I don't know what those should be. I don't know where they should be located. I just know that I wouldn't put it at the edge of the wetland because then the thing that, you know, is an actual resource that's there would be the first thing to get impacted. So, people typically will put like a forested buffering between that and a wetland.
So, a wetland would be useful for like a CO2 emissions from airport, from airplanes taking off, that sort of thing?
No.
Okay. Oh, it's not? Okay. What I've been reading is incorrect then. It has no value for that.
No, I mean, I, I don't know the, if you're talking about air emissions...
Well, they're on the ground.
Wetlands interact with air emissions other than soaring carbon from the forested trees that are there.
Well, I think the thought is, is that the airplane that is running on the ground for quite a while before it will take off... Well, I think I think the thought is is that the airplane that is is running on the ground for quite a while before it will take off. So there's a quite a bit of emissions that go on the ground.
Yeah, I mean, it's just like the buses sitting outside the schools.
Do you think that it's do you think that it's a good do you think it's a good idea to put hangars right over a forested wetland? Right up to a forested wetland? Would that be a logical? Even though you're not a planner, do you think that that as a as a DEP person who knows about pollution and wetlands, would that be logical to you?
What I can say on that is if somebody was going to build a building, a structure over a wetland, they would need to come in for some pretty heavy duty permit under the Natural Resources Protection Act and all of those details would be looked into in that process.
Okay.
You can't impact that, you know, wetlands, blue structures like that in excess of forty-three hundred square feet without permit. And that's going to be require a full individual natural resources protection permit, which is going to require, again, I'm not a licensor, but typically that would bring in I F N U. That's going to bring in a lot of other agencies for review on whether the project would be acceptable.
If Owls had decided, as it has right now, that a wetlands could be forested and under ten acres and still be considered a wetlands by our standard, would DEP look at that as a wetlands or would it, because it doesn't meet your criteria, would would it be not examined by DEP?
Okay, so let's DEP is a very large agency. So when you're dealing with wetlands, you're dealing with two specific parts of the DEP. You're dealing with shoreline zoning regulations and the Natural Resources Protection Act. So the best way I've been able to explain this so people understand it more clearly is it's like your car. To be legal to drive in the state of Maine on a road, you need to be both registered and inspected. Two different sets of laws governing the same piece of property. And that's how the Natural Resources Protection Act works as well as the shoreline zoning laws. So just because something isn't shoreline zone doesn't mean that it's not protected by the DEP. It's just protected by the other arm of the DEP. So if you don't have a wetland that's over ten acres in size that is not forested, that just means it's not shoreline zoned. So it isn't controlled necessarily by the municipality. But it absolutely is still controlled and governed by the Natural Resources Protection Act, which is administered and enforced by the DEP.
Right, but that
And often times, that's a better solution because you have more scientific backing, more professional experience, more review items like that in dealing with wetland impacts than say your normal planning board. Your planning board may be way more educated than the planning boards I typically work with. But most of the planning boards or town governments that I deal with, they they could walk through a forested wetland and not even realize that there are any forested wetlands. You guys may be in a very different category down there. But but what I can say is, you know, all of those wetlands, whether they're a small forested wetlands or a large open water wetlands, they're they do get oversight by the department under the Natural Resources Protection Act.
But the oversight that they offer includes trades of land or wetlands. So in other words, if the airport wants to build on a specific area where there's a small wetland, they would be able to trade it out and do another wetland somewhere else and thereby making a an area that was used as a buffer, even though you don't like that term, it is, quite frankly, an area that is used as a buffer and as well as a delicate area that we would like to have protected. That is, that's one of their ways that they deal with it when it's, I mean, the airport has already traded wetlands before, correct?
I I don't know what permits they have, but you are correct. There is an M V type of situation that allows people to conserve wetlands in other areas. There is some trades that that isn't what I do for work. But I I do, I I do take a little stance that if you said that I don't think wetlands are are
Oh, I thought that that was
That's not what I said.
Okay.
And that's not even close.
Okay.
I understand your point that DEP does permit things on the Natural Resources Protection Act. The wetlands do go away.
Are you aware of
And I
Oh, just wondering if you're aware in two thousand and three that the Polk residence that is just off of the airport, their well was found to have detectable concentrations of N T P E in it. And they had to go through remediation. And that's one of the reasons that we are trying so hard to protect our water resources at the airport. And I'm I'm hearing from you that, yes, it's important, but not this way, that we shouldn't be using a shoreline zoning ordinance for this purpose. That's what that's what I'm understanding. But before we get into a discussion on that, I wanted to ask you, you stated, if I understood correctly, that our map, you believe, is open to legal attack. Basically, that somebody that you believe that there is holes in our in the in our historic map that we've been using for twenty years. My question to you is, does you, do you believe that our historic map has no value legally?
Well, let me get back to the two questions you asked before.
Okay.
No, I'm not aware of the person's well being impacted by N T D E because that isn't what I do for work. In two thousand and three, I was not doing this job. I was working in the Air Bureau down in Portland expecting rock pressures and asphalt plants and gravel pits and all kinds of stuff like that. So no, I have no knowledge of that. The obviously, the response crew and those folks did have some interaction. But I I'm not aware of that. Now, moving forward to your question about this historical map, it isn't necessarily the map. It isn't necessarily the ordinance. It's the fact that they don't say the same thing. That's the issue. On their own, they as a standalone document, if somebody just looks at it and says, yeah, that's an RP. Okay, that's an RP. But then when you look back at the ordinance and it says RP is areas within two hundred and fifty feet of a protected natural resource, that doesn't match up. It doesn't match up in a few areas within your town. Not just the airport. It's some of the state park property where the whole property, the whole lot was in resource protection when your ordinance specifically says areas within two hundred and fifty feet. And that extends much deeper. Now, the town can change that. The town of Roxbury has a seven hundred and fifty foot shoreline zone around Roxbury Pond. Ransley has a thousand foot shoreline zone around Ransley Lake. That if all of those things are doable and acceptable and they're designed in their ordinance and backed up by their map. What I'm saying is, if someone looks at your map and then looks at the ordinance and they don't mesh up very well, you guys even have the problem where, you know, within your land use table, it says what there are for allowed uses within a resource protection district. Commercial is not one of them. And you have a huge commercial property operating in a resource protection district. So that doesn't match up either. But and absolutely, I believe that the town would like to buffer this place so spills and impacts the water quality, drinking water, aquifers, people's wells are protected. I think that's great. But we need to figure out some way to do that. It doesn't, I mean, if you if you're going to leave it in a shoreline zoning ordinance, then there would need to be changes made. And maybe maybe within your shoreline zoning ordinance, if you guys really want to have it in there, create a new district within the within the airport museum district. And then list out the allowed uses in and just have that as a rather than a specific shoreline zoning ordinance, have it just be a land use ordinance. And that way you can deal with that there.
Why did you approve this back in? Why did you approve the us back in two thousand and twenty-two? When we went through all of the changes, we did all the changes that you recommended. You gave us an email with with a list of changes. We did everything that you required until you said, that makes it, that's good. And we sent it forward and and went through everything. And now we're hearing that apparently nothing that we did was good. So it's it's very frustrating.
I think you may be exaggerating a whole bunch right there.
Why? What part?
The changes that you made in two thousand and twenty-two were to get you up to the two thousand and fifteen standards of the shoreline zoning minimum guidelines.
Yes, that's correct. That's what we were directed to do. That is exactly what, yes. And what you're saying, oh, I see what you're saying now is that the the planning board would like to go further now and make their own shoreline zoning ordinance and and change it. That's what you're saying, and you're suggesting changes.
Right, you guys have brought another draft situation to the table. And I think you'll find back in two thousand and twenty-two, the same comments were being made. That the airport doesn't need to be an RP. It doesn't meet the definition. You guys should work on that. The same thing was said in two thousand and twenty, probably two thousand and nineteen, when all these meetings were happening. It's all been exactly the same.
It has been exactly the same. And what has come out time and time again is that a historic map is a historic map and there's nothing illegal with it. This is what you told us over and over again. Is it illegal or not?
What do you mean illegal?
Well, and you're, from what I'm hearing from you, our map is not, it is not a legal document. It doesn't match what the ordinance says. That's what I'm hearing from you.
Saying that it's, at no point did I ever say it's not a legal document.
Okay.
What I'm saying is the ordinance and the map don't match.
And it's up for legal
And that's a problem.
Yeah, and and it's up for legal arguments and fights and and lawsuits and all of that.
Very well taken.
All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who might speak? Richard?
Richard Caverum on the ordinance committee. One thing I wanted to clarify, pretty much everything that's been said already, is that the section on great ponds and so forth, we've been discussing back before, one of our committee members thought it was best to put in that that we have no great ponds and so forth in Owls Head. Just to clarify, that section, we we thought was required to be in our ordinance. And so we placed that in there. But then the clarification was, just for anybody looking at it, that the town does not have any great ponds and so forth. And that was the reason for that section being as it was.
Right, yeah, and that, like I said, it it's not necessary, but it it's not her anything. Towns that are in this situation that don't have great ponds or rivers or a significant river segment, oftentimes they'll put that up more near the beginning of the document rather than kind of stuffed into that little RP section where yours is. So it kind of leads the document in saying, just so everybody's aware, there are no great ponds or rivers in the town. That way, you know, because where it's placed down is in that resource protection section. But everybody might not be looking at the resource protection section. So in your, well, in the draft that I reviewed in two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, you guys have a section right at the beginning, section three, it says applicability. And you could very easily put that sentence at the bottom of it, right? You know, right after the bulleted points where it talks about two hundred and fifty feet horizontal distance from the upper edge of the wetland of a coastal wetland, including all areas affected by tidal action, two hundred and fifty feet from the end of fresh water wetlands, seven thousand five hundred, I want to let it straight. And right underneath that, you could say the town of Owls Head doesn't have any rivers or great ponds. That would be, because at least people at that point would be looking at the applicability and figuring out if they need to do anything. And in all actuality, in that section, you guys, there's a note. It actually says there are no great ponds or rivers in the town of Owls Head. It's right on page three in the draft. So you don't necessarily need to have that. And then RP section is already covered on page three of this draft that I'm looking at. But granted, this one is from two thousand and twenty-two, so well, two thousand and twenty-one when it was written, I don't know.
Thank you. Matt, do you have anything you want to ask him?
No.
Anybody else?
No. Colin, very much. The town of Owls Head would like to thank you very much for your time tonight and enlightening enlightening us as a planning board. You may know that I'm a rookie at this. I've only been on board for a couple of months. And so I'm trying my best to catch up and do things correctly. And I appreciate your time.
Yeah, yeah, not a problem at all. I'd just like to leave it, I just said, Matt, the comments that I had made back in two thousand and twenty-one. And I'm going to follow up with another email. It are all the comments from two thousand and twenty-two. And it has arrows and all the stuff where it's showing all the areas that, you know, kind of needed some touch-up work. I I really appreciate the work that the town has done, the ordinance committee, the map committee. This is not an easy process. And I understand there's a lot of, you know, concern on on different properties within the town. And there's a lot of history behind a lot of this stuff. I I I can't speak to, you know, how it got to to where it is today. That was long before my time. And I have no idea why things got to where they are. And my only intent is to help the community get a good ordinance in place for the shoreline zoning aspect of things. And as the AG's office talks to me about it all the time, have things be legally defensible. That way, you know, when you go into a courtroom and somebody's challenging you, you know, it is a coin flip going into the court. You know, you you want courtroom decisions to be nine to ten in your favor unless somebody pulls the rabbit out of the hat. And I understand that, you know, there's a lot of action, there's a lot of stuff going on down there. And I appreciate that because that's how good county governments work. It's the towns that I never hear from that are typically have the most problems because they they care less. And you guys care a lot. And and that's great. And it's something that really should be commended. And I will say that, you know, I I work with, well, now we're just down to two staff members for the entire state, which is frustrating at best, but out of the towns that I work with, you guys have a great CEO. You guys have a great town manager. You have a great committees and planning boards that that really do good work. So the only reason shoreline zoning is successful in the state of Maine is the good work that that all of you are doing. And I kind of leave you with this. I get calls from, I've already gotten four or five this year from different states around the country asking why shoreline zoning is so effective in protecting water quality and protecting the resources that people like to get out and recreate on. And the answer is always that it has nothing to do with me and and my staff. It it has to do with the folks at the local level that are boots on the ground, that are actually out there doing the work. That's what makes the big difference. That's what makes this program successful. That's what makes it the envy to a lot of communities around the US that don't have the good water quality. that don't have the good water quality, that don't have the recreational opportunities that that we do here in Maine. That's why we're vacation land. That's why everybody comes here, is because of what we have outside. Not because of the houses are nice, it's not because, you know, we have, you know, the best cars or or anything like that, or amusement parks or anything like that. It's because of the resources. And resources are in place and protected because of the good work people do at the local level. So I I meditate and I appreciate the the work that you guys do down there, as well as the work that other communities do around the state. Would it be awesome if you had a cool amusement park with some big roller coasters? Yeah, I'd be completely down, because I I really like that stuff. When I want to go do that, I can hop the plane or hop in my vehicle and go to that. But I really enjoy the fact that the work that you all do in coordination with, you know, many, many people, legislators, you know, state workers or whatever, has been so successful that we can still be vacation land and people still love to come here to to recreate and to get outdoors. But other than that, if you guys have any other follow up questions, you know, how to get ahold of me? My email's always open, like I told you guys before. Or I just mentioned it again, you know, gave down to two people through the entire state. It is frustrating. Two years ago, I was looking out my office window at at four state employees. I was, you know, pruning five trees outside my window. And I immediately went over and got the bureau director and brought him in my window. And I was like, can you look at this for a second? He looks outside and says, oh, what's that? Yeah, you you see what's going on here? It's like, oh, yeah, they're out there, you know, getting a brown tailed moth nest off or whatever they were doing. I was like, no, not that. You see, you got four people out there dealing with five trees? He's like, yeah. I was like, you got three people dealing with all the trees that are located within the shoreline zone of the entire state. It's time to talk about staffing. It's time to try to get some more people involved. It's time to get some more employees out there so we can be more helpful to community like, communities like yours, and so we can do better work. So we're trying, pushing. There there are some things that are going to be coming. Hopefully, my fingers are crossed, that will alleviate some of that, that we'll get a little bit more staff in some of the some of the areas around the state. But if anybody needs anything from me, you know, feel free to pass out my email. Email is the best way to get ahold of me these days. If you call, you're gonna get trapped in my voicemail. It's gonna be way too long, and you're gonna be really frustrated that I haven't called you back. But it's just the nature of the beast right now. I get about 60 calls a day. And there's simply no way to get all the way back through the email on a timely bear, the voicemail on a timely bear. But if you email me, I can get back to you real quick. So if anybody's got any follow ups, you know, get with Matt, get with Bob, they got my email. I'm sure they'd be happy to share it with you. And, you know, we'll get things squared away the best we can. And like I said, I'm gonna send Matt another email right now. It has the second half of the the comments from the 2022 draft review. If anybody wants to compare and contrast with what was said in 2021 versus 2022, it should be basically identical. But if I can be any more helpful, let me know. And again, I really appreciate all the work that you guys do down there.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, take care.
Bye bye. Want to scratch for a minute? I've got a strong battery.
Now, one of the responsibilities that we have tonight is to forward our comment, a comment, to the selectmen. And it was suggested strongly that we don't go into details. We don't do a a list of issues or anything else. But simply to say that we approve and ask for ought to pass on this ordinance as written. And the other would be to say ought not to pass as written. And this is now an opportunity for you guys to discuss it.
Well, I would like to get what I had mentioned before, the piece of land at the bottom of Ash Point, either changed to recreational or he's, you know, I, resource protection means that you can't do anything within 250 feet. Is that what he was saying? But with shoreline zoning, can you build within the 250 feet?
If you have a large enough lot, you can build it within 250 feet, but not within 75 feet of the water. So the front of your house could be 76 feet from the water lot.
And I would like to see it changed to recreational or something.
If this is a 50 by 50 lot, it's not large enough for anything. And you couldn't build a house on it, because you've got to be 25 feet from all sides.
But why would we keep it commercial?
I have no idea, except that this is an interesting problem for this committee and all of the committees that have done this in the past. They have left things in an ordinance because it was in before. Well, if it's not brought to the town because of a change that they want to have, it stays just as it is. So that's going to stay in the commercial zone until someone writes it into the ordinance that it's going to be changed. And change the map and change the wording in the ordinance, then take it to the town, and that's how you may change. Am I right?
Yeah. And it doesn't affect the tax value, because it's, there's no taxes to town property.
Right.
Well, why can't we do it? Why can't we?
In order to do it, it has to be in this ordinance. When when this goes before the town, if the the selectmen say, we're gonna send it to the town as a warrant, it cannot be changed, not one word in it.
That's what I put in, told me. He said, we could add that.
Well, what we can, what we can do is we can say, we want to adjust and modify a few things. For example, we've got an illegal problem with the resource protection in the state parks. That's illegal. So it's got to be changed. So we could make those changes, hold another public hearing with a new amended ordinance, amended amended ordinance, get that through, and then go to a town meeting. And it may or may not be ready in August. That, I mean, these wonderful people have worked three years to get this document to where it is now.
So maybe leaving the resource protection on the state park properties?
It would be.
They're not in resource protection. The maps are wrong. Town of Owl's Head does not have the authority to put those up. They are not. They are only that color on our maps. They are not resource protection.
Well, now, correct me, they are listed as colored as resource protection?
The town of Owl's Head does not have the authority, nor do their voters, to put that in resource protection. The map is wrong.
Okay, but the the ordinance says that they are.
I understand.
Okay.
They're not.
So there we go.
Just those two properties, the state has two jurisdictions on those properties. The town does not.
But our ordinance should, it's like, it's like.
Another zone, another shade on the map. It's all, yes.
Yes.
On state park properties.
But we can't do that tonight, make those changes, and then send it off to the town, because we have to have a public hearing for all of those changes to be adopted.
And so, yes.
Yes, if we're going to, if we're going to accept this as written, that's the way it's gonna be. That's the way it's going, yeah. If you want to make changes, go through another public hearing and all that. We can make that recommendation, but that's still the the choice of the select board.
Caveat to that is you can put it there as it is. Yes, they're listed as resource protection on our map. However, they're not regulated as such. They're just that color on our map. If, you know, you want it to proceed the way it is. So I'm talking specifically to the two parks. That is it.
So this is the final document? Because I know there were additional changes and corrections made.
Once it was printed and what it went to the public hearing.
This is it?
That's the part, that's it.
So that's beyond what we received originally?
We we received what we got for the public hearing, held a public hearing. And that's, that's where we have to decide, do we want that to go to the town for referendum in August? And we recommend that to the select board? Or do we want to make these changes? Go through another public hearing and then hold a a town meeting if it, if we don't get it done before August? And I think they're gonna tell us, there's no way that you can do it that quickly. They work real hard to to.
This is what we have here, is what that committee wants.
This is what's going to go to the town for vote?
If we agree, well, it's gonna go, but we can make our own recommendations.
Yes, but the the selectmen have another set of choices to make.
Sure.
Postponing it to a later date, modifying it, hold another hearing, and all that kind of stuff. So those are the possibilities. But what I would like to have the board do is vote on whether we support the concept of it going forward or whether we support, don't support it, and let the selectmen at least know how we feel. But we're not putting anything, I can read you what I've written. And it says, we held a public hearing on May 8th to gather input on the proposed changes to the shoreline zoning ordinance. We held a following, a follow up discussion of the proposed changes at our regular meeting on June 12th. The board voted to blank resolution. One or two?
Do you want to give our resolution or whatever?
We we need to send something. But when, but I am not going to put in a list of things that need to be.
No.
If if we're gonna reject it, if we're gonna accept it, then that's pretty clear.
I'll make a motion then. Make a motion that we do reject it, send it back. And at the same time, they could change that commercials lot, lot on the end of Ash Point, back to a rural residential or whatever down the zone.
A point of clarification, when you said send it back, are you gonna ask that committee to go back and do this?
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, I think it's confusing to keep those packs showing this resource protection. The airport, if it doesn't need to be there, it shouldn't be there. So those things should be taken out.
I'm sorry, I was out of line. It's been moved, has it been seconded? Oh, sorry. You've been seconded, okay. Now we can have the discussion.
You know, it it just adds confusion in resource protection. I've been dealing with this for three years in another town, so I know what it's about. And it just adds that much confusion. It confuses the voters, everything. So if the packs don't need to be in it, they're in the 250 shoreline zone, those things apply. But when you get up there 1,000 feet from the road, that shouldn't be in resource protection. So get that taken out, put it back in your pack zone or whatever. And the same way at the airport, if there's no resource protection there, it shouldn't be in there.
Do I understand your motion to be that you would send a letter to the selectmen and say that it ought not to pass?
Yes.
And you agree with that? Just a second, okay? Any other discussion? All those in favor, you can vote.
Okay.
Okay?
In favor of what? To send it back?
We we're going to send a letter to the town, it's unanimous, to the selectmen that says that it ought not to pass, okay? One down. I have minutes here. Okay, the second one that we have to do is exactly the same thing. We have to send a letter, and the letter is the same, ought to pass or ought not to pass on the citizens petition that we held a hearing on last week?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday, okay. Is there any discussion that you want to have about that hearing? We're not gonna have the benefit of any expert witness on this. But you, and you can't vote on these because you weren't present. But Susan will be voting on your staff, okay? So it'll be the four of us, okay? But you can have input. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I make the motion again. That we reject this one too, because it's gonna take everything out of the hands of the planning board, make it so confusing, but like these gentlemen right here are coming for a hanger. That would have to come to a public hearing. Then they would have to go to a town vote, and they would have to be explaining what their project is for the airport at a regular town meeting. And that would be almost, that would be very unfair to people like that to try and explain what their project is.
Okay, would you make the motion?
Make the motion or we reject that petition.
Okay, has it been moved? Seconded? Seconded, okay. Discussion by anybody?
Yes, it was suggested earlier that the airport be a commercial zone and be restricted by, you know, whatever commercial is, as well as, and it's a commercial in the residential area. And then it would have to go before a public hearing. Say that again? Well, right now, this is saying, quit asking for an airport zone. And it says, no, 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 not commercial, no, you know, nothing. It means it's, to me, it means it's absolutely not allowed. Why wouldn't we take the recommendation that was made earlier by Colin to turn that into a commercial zone? So that we could regulate it.
Again, once we've had the public hearing, we've got that one piece of paper, and that's all that we can go for. We cannot change.
Okay, well, then I have another question. Why are we assuming that if this passes, it does not go before the planning board? Any changes don't go before the planning board?
In the last box over, which is commercial, it has the word no in it. Right now, it has PV, planning board. So anything that was going on in the commercial zone came before the planning board. Now the question is, is the planning board gonna be involved in anything that the airport wants to put up, or does the town have to do it?
Okay, that's why I think it's recommended commercial. Yes.
Yes.
I've seconded it, so are we gonna vote?
We can, I just want to give you all a chance to speak. Okay? A call vote? All those in favor of putting an ought not to pass letter to the selectmen on the citizens petition? Let's see, man, it's four to four. Okay. We have an application from David Carter to put a hanger in the airport. And fortunately, today, they brought us, and we only have one copy of it, which I've gotta return. Who's David Carter?
I am.
Welcome. This is the building that he wants to assemble. I'm gonna give you a chance to speak. And all of the mapping material, which the board has not seen. We have got a copy of your.
Application?
Application, and you've all seen that, okay? Would you like to come up and make a presentation? Good boy.
I'm Dave. I work over at the Owl's Head Transportation Museum. I'm their new aircraft conservator over there. We're right up here.
No, just mic over.
The microphone right here.
In here. I don't seem to have a microphone, oh my God. Is this good?
Please state what town you're from.
I'm David Carter. I live in the town of Nobleborough. I work in the town of Owl's Head, at the transportation museum. So I I'm a pilot, I have an airplane. When the hangars came up for sale over here from the county, I tried to bid on one of those hangars. Unfortunately, I didn't bid enough money. So I didn't get a hanger. So I did not get a hanger. Which one? This one?
Both.
Both. So I need a place to put my airplane. We need to build a hangar. It's just a little moony, single engine. It's my personal airplane, it's just used for my personal use. And I don't see any other option. I am not billing a lot. I am not building a large hangar, it's thirty-six feet by forty-two feet, fits one airplane. It's all I wanna do, have a home for my airplane. I don't know what else I should comment on, I don't know what other questions you might have.
Yes, sir.
I saw something with a plan, you're gonna, is it steel and, and wood purling type of building or something?
That's correct, it's a miracle trust building, wood, steel and purling.
So it would have a, uh, a concrete floor?
Oh, absolutely.
So the concrete floor and, and all the other hangars that we've been approving lately have a concave floor in it?
I'm aware of that.
To make sure that, you know, when the plane sits in there, if it springs a leak, it'll contain the fluid.
Yes, I'm very aware of that, I'm also aware of the drainage around the outside of the hangar, I included that with my plans.
Yes.
Yeah, right there, you know, about runoff control and all of that that they have for the rainwater coming off the roof and things like that.
So this piece of property, I mean, I've been looking on the map and it was just kinda confusing, I know it's off down a lane.
Right.
But, uh, in lot, what, fifty-nine or something like that? No, the hangars one, two, three, and four, and five, and six are already there.
This is next to six.
Yes, sitting behind it. So in other words, you're gonna have to extend that tarmac a little bit to get your plane in there.
A little bit.
So, and it won't be attached to hangar six, it'll be whatever.
Free standing building.
I can't remember, we had a minimum setback to ten feet between the buildings or something?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five between hangars?
That's a fire thing, isn't it? Twenty-five?
So that's twenty-five feet.
So this is not, it wasn't drawn to scale, whatever.
I didn't draw it.
That's why I was curious.
Now, I'm confused. Hangar, is it one and two are twenty-five feet apart, but three, four, five, and six are all?
Those were all built a long time ago, so there was probably some grand fathering there.
Okay. Well, they're T-hanger construction, a tube-type construction, it was pretty popular back then. It's all one building really. So there is a setback of twenty-five feet within the airport, uh, even though it's owned by one person. Of one, uh, the county, I'm sorry.
Yes, the county leases the land, this ground leases, uh, for the hangar owners. Yeah, so for all the new hangars that we've developed in the other areas, we have twenty-five foot setback.
Okay, so that is twenty-five feet between the buildings?
It wouldn't be, but what I drew may not be.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. I didn't use a ruler with little.
It's pretty, we understand though, it needs to be twenty-five foot from the other building.
And did I hear you correctly that you are gonna put a sloped floor in?
Convex.
Concave floor.
Containment, yes.
Yes, good. Is that a requirement of the airport, not yet?
It was something that was introduced at the planning board a few years back. We don't have any objection to it, obviously it is a peace of mind for containment and the hangar owners are all.
Not bad idea.
I'm not fine with it. Okay, I, I don't mean to put you on the hot seat, but we're gonna have to go through this. I want to develop a technique for the planning board so that when we get future requests for hangars, we have the same consistent set of questions and stuff. So I'm gonna go through a series of them with you. We're calling this, uh, it's called Finding the Facts. And we just have to clarify each one of those.
Very good.
Okay? The first one is a signed lease, you have it prepared to be signed tomorrow.
Correct.
In order for us to issue a permit, we should have a copy of that. And I believe that we can do that because if you get it signed tomorrow, it will, the permit won't be issued until at least Thursday or Monday of next week if it's approved tonight, okay? So, uh, I've, I've seen the, um, agreement that you have with the county and you just have to finish that document.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that, that will be done by tomorrow. So we, we would issue a conditional permit that would be approved upon receiving that.
Okay.
Okay, okay. And then we have to figure out where in the ordinance you come down on it. Have you read our zoning ordinance?
Cover to cover, no.
You should, uh, be able to come in and say, under particular ordinance, section such and such, I applied in this vein. I'll help you out a little bit.
Please.
There is a commercial building on page thirteen of our zoning ordinance. And we have probably two, maybe three potential ones, but that seems to fit the best. You want a commercial building, although it's not really a non-commercial building, it's on a commercial property.
Is it on a commercial, I, I?
Yes, the, the land that the county owns around the airport, unless this is in resource protection, it's commercial.
I've heard both sides, I'm not sure what it is.
So on page thirteen, in our list of ordnance, uh, list of the activities, it's our commercial building. So you would be applying under that.
Okay.
Okay. Because your other choices are a commercial outdoor recreation.
No.
Well, that, well, it could be, but it means the tennis courts, it means somebody's golf course.
Okay.
Things like that. And where this, um, plane is a recreational plane for you, instead of an outdoor activity, you could argue that.
It's storage is what I'm trying to accomplish.
Couldn't it be the next one, commercial storage, motor vehicles?
That's the number, number four, again on page thirteen, where it would be for repair and storage of vehicle.
Well, for air.
And includes air wings.
That sounds close, I mean, I don't know the impact of one over the other, but.
There isn't any, but we have to.
Well, I like that one, yeah.
We gotta check the box, bingo.
Brad, maybe.
Okay, the setbacks have been set at twenty-five feet, which we will include in our finding of facts that the building will be twenty-five feet.
Yes, sir.
An associated building. There's nothing in your discussion about the height of the building and it probably is in that book that.
It's, it is in the plan, I can give you a rough number. I don't think, the, the building is under twenty feet tall.
Okay. Our, our ordinance calls for thirty, no greater than twenty-five.
It's way under thirty-five.
Twenty foot plus or minus?
Yeah, I might say twenty-five, just so I'm more accurate.
That's fine, okay. Not to exceed twenty-five feet. Uh, in your agreement with the county, uh, you agreeing that if you, um, get to the end of the life of the contract, you're responsible to, to take the unit down.
Okay.
To do any of the, uh, remove the improvements as well in your agreement.
Okay.
Okay, we have to agree, you have to tell us that in fact, that you intend to do that.
I agreed to remove the building at the end of our contract.
And it's in the lease, so it's between you and the county, one of those between us.
Okay.
You can't sell the building?
I can.
Yes. Oh, okay.
I, I was really wondering, how long till, when then?
The lease is twenty years.
And it's extendable?
Yes. For ten-year periods, I think.
Okay, very good.
And waste disposal is also included in that. Just, uh, garbage that you take to the.
Oh, okay.
Something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
You just, you have to dispose of your wastes properly.
Very good.
So yes, you're gonna do that. And that's in the contract. And you're gonna fix the floor to, you call it a concave floor.
Convex, maybe?
Convex.
Concave.
Concave, okay.
Concave.
I say concave.
It's gonna be low in the middle.
And I assume that is large enough to take the entire volume of the fuel that you would have on your plane?
That's quite a discussion, but, um, well, that's some math. But a concrete slab of that size can hold many times more in absorption of the fuel than my plane can ever hold, so.
I would say, I think those other hangars that we approved were, some of them were sixty by sixty or seventy by seventy. I think it was like maybe a three to four inch depression. It was, you know, it was quite a volume by just making that, you know, say, four inch depression in which you'd hardly even know if you're walking in across that floor.
We will ask the contractor what's a good number to absorb the proper amount. Yeah, too. The airplane holds a hundred gallons of fuel, it's not, you know, it's not a thousand gallons of jet fuel or something.
And I assume you don't have a five-hundred gallon tank in the corner.
No, that's a great idea.
Your contract doesn't allow.
Oh, that's right.
And my next company, I already.
Utilities, plumbing, heating, electrical?
Probably electrical.
Okay. Probably not plumbing?
I'd be surprised, I don't know if there's water available to decide or not, but I, I would say at this time, no. It's storage, we don't, there won't be any plumbing or, um, you know, heating, well, I mean, it won't be a gas line to the building or anything, you know, I might plug in that electric heater once in a while.
Yeah, okay. And the question really is whether or not you're gonna have a bathroom in it.
No.
None of them do.
That makes a big difference.
No.
None of them do.
No, okay. And then, um, whether we need a security bond or a letter of credit? Are you going to borrow the money for the, um, project?
No.
Okay. Then the county probably will want some kind of security that says that you really are gonna do this and you're capable of doing it.
Okay.
Okay. And I would have to assume from you that, uh, we would know that also.
Well, we need a bank statement?
A, a letter of credit from a bank saying, yes, he's good for it?
I can, tell me what you want, I'll get it, but I'm not borrowing the money, I have the money. It's a bank statement, which is.
Verification of funds.
Why right now?
Well, as a matter of fact, we should have it right now, but.
It's easy, it's easy enough to do. No, we'll just pick up this one, I'll just show them, save this account, good?
You only need paper, right?
Yes, do you?
What, what if you got a letter?
It's conditional. It'll be conditional on your.
Okay, conditional that I provide proof of.
Somebody can always take the money out and use it some other way.
Well, that's true.
We can draw on it if, if you pass it.
You know, and I can split it.
But I mean, I'm trying to build a hangar, I'm not, you know, I'm the one who's gonna be the loser.
I understand, what I'm trying to do is to set down a map for the next one.
And everything, I, I can, what, what would you like for me to set aside some funds? What would you like for me to do?
What about providing a letter of credit?
In the form of papers, we can have file. Yeah, just something that we can put in the file that says, you're gonna do this job.
Okay, well, I mean, I'll ask someone at the bank what to do and we'll put something together for you, thank you.
I mean, I don't think, we don't want a half-built building, you know, sitting there.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
You, you don't wanna say that you're good for ten thousand dollars and get ten thousand dollars into it and then say, well, I can't finish it. Will, will that have to be sent to the town office so they can print it out for you? These particular needs to go.
Do you also wanna clarify how much money that is? Yeah, you, you, you're in a real mucky area.
I said it, seventy-five thousand dollars.
And it is so much for you, it's, it's for you.
You were like, I, that's a good number.
Yeah, well, that's.
I probably put it on there.
So, yeah. So I think.
Seventy-five thousand. Yes, that's the major cost.
Okay.
Just something that says that you're good for seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
And please understand, this is our first time through this.
Yeah, I just don't know what exactly to bring you. If I was getting a loan or credit, it'd be easy, I'd bring you something from the bank, now I'm gonna. And then it's like, okay, well, you got the money today, how do we know you're gonna have it tomorrow?
Well, that's what a letter of credit from the bank that has where that money is. And then if you don't finish it, you take. Yeah, but the bank could give you a letter, give us a letter of credit, guaranteeing that.
I will ask the bank what they suggest.
Otherwise.
I will tell them what the situation is.
That's what they could give you, a letter, give us a letter of credit.
Is there any other finding?
No, this doesn't mean it's good, it means that. We're sure we're gonna get seventy-five thousand dollars to finish it, that's what it is.
Is there any other, um, findings of fact that need to be made that I didn't list? Sorry, I, I, I did this this morning.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty good.
No, it's good, it's good, so.
I've got it all.
You've got it, okay.
So we have two conditions, correct? A signed lease and some kind of proof of funds.
No problem. Funds, yes.
And make a motion, we accept this. Are we ready for that, or you?
And if you can get those to Matt's or Matt's office to hear.
Yes.
That's all you need to do.
No problem.
Okay, sir.
I make a motion that we accept this project as complete with the conditions requested.
Okay, it's been moved, seconded.
I can't vote.
It's been moved and seconded, um, that we accept this and, uh, with the, with two conditions, okay?
Thank you.
All in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations, you're doing a good job. Thank you for your understanding of us trying to get through this. The next thing on, she's already getting ready. We, we have received, and you've all got copies of two proposals and I think they're only gonna deal with one at this moment, am I correct? Just.
Yes, two, one of them, um.
Let me introduce, what Jeremy's going to do is introduce to us, uh, under site review, uh, a preliminary, non-official, uh, introduction to this. We're gonna accept it and then at the next meeting, we'll have an official, um, presentation by the airport people, uh, in Centec, I guess, on one or both of these, however he wants to do it. We have to do this preliminary one in, uh, site review so that we can get him on the agenda the next time so we can get moving on it. But then a clock starts next time and not this time, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, Jeremy Shaw, eighteen, Genius Lane, also airport manager. So you have two packets, we have two applications before you tonight. Um, one, we, we supplied as the original application, uh, for hangar, the hangar taxi lane phase two. It was at the, uh, request, um, of the, uh, the town that we submit, um, an application that just includes the hangar taxi lane and not the hangars. And that's why that's the second application. So that's the one we're actually applying for, or, or we're doing a preliminary, uh, presentation on is the, uh, the hangar taxi lane phase two with just the taxi lane without the hangar. So, um, hangar owners in the future would come to the planning board to get their, the required permits for that area, so. Centec has provided our, our, our mock-up here. Most of this is already constructed, the only thing that we're left to construct is the, is the pavement, so there's a little bit of more earthwork to do and, um, nothing has changed since the original application, it's the same layout. Uh, there's some electrical involved, there's no, there's no utilities. Uh, down that low ramp is too far for water, there's a lot of ledge to deal with and stuff like that. So it's, uh, it's really impossible to get water to sewer down, not impossible, but it costs quite a bit of money. So this is, you know, there, it, this is just a preliminary, but, uh, so the hangars are shown there, it's kind of a, uh, a concept. But the taxi lane, all of the construction, all the earthwork is, I would say, eighty, ninety-five, ninety percent done?
Uh, seventy.
Seventy, so.
We still have a box out that first section.
Jeremy, if you were to orient that to the exact location of, of where it is on the land.
Sure.
Would it be ninety degrees to that?
So Ash Point Drive is right, is, is right here, let's pretend this line here is Ash Point Drive.
Okay.
So the airport's entrance is right here.
Okay.
And then there's the trees here along the airport and then there's a road that turns into this road here. That'll be the entrance for the new hangar taxi lane. So that, this, uh, this is paved from here to the terminal lane. And then this right now is just all the earthwork that's prepped for pavement, so.
And that road stinking off results to the Tiramacan?
Yeah, so this here is the beginning of phase one, which is already constructed, and it has one of the eight hangers.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is the new pavement, so the old pavement butts up to right here. New pavement goes down and around and connects to the taxi lane.
Just to get a complete picture, Jeremy, where are the solar panels?
Solar panels are gonna go right here along the parking.
I thought we approved already this. Didn't we approve all this last year or so?
This, yes, so this was approved, the permit is, I guess, we share 30%, so the permit is, is good, but.
It was appealed.
Yeah, but why are you back here now, if we've already proved it?
Because the project has been appealed and potentially remanded back to the planning boards for review.
Of the finding of facts?
Correct.
Okay, well, I thought that was, we were postponing that or something because of a court challenge or something?
Yeah, so this is, we're not actually doing our official presentation, this is just to bring everybody up to speed. New members of the board.
Okay, I mean, I just, you know.
Yep, just to, if you want to do a site lock or something like that, we have the opportunity to do that.
Just trying to figure out why, yeah.
Yep. So, some parking spaces over here, like I said, the solar's gonna be fenced in all the way around. We have 265 plantings going on the outside of that fence, so most of this will all be shielded, it will all be shielded by trees, fence.
Was the retention pond or filter area shown on the original, or is that something that's been added?
It was original.
Okay.
Yep, it's permanent, yeah.
And for anybody, nobody's, no, all the people have left. That's the part of protecting the wetlands, is that anything that comes off on that project goes into that filter area and gets treated before it's released back into the groundwater?
Correct.
With all the people that were here left that should know that.
Anything else you'd like to say?
Any, anything, any?
I mean, do you want to clarify that, you know, individual hangar owners would come back before they were to start construction to get their respective permit for each hangar? It sounds like you guys have.
Just like we did tonight.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes. Well, we've been advised not to deal with that until the court is done with that process. This one was not in one or two, so we could get away with it.
No, this is two, isn't it?
This is phase two, but we're not asked for any hangar.
Yeah, there's no hangers.
No, this is just for the road construction and infrastructure.
Yep.
But, that's phase two, phase one was the other eight hangers.
Right down here, correct.
Which has already been approved.
Correct.
Which is being challenged, or at least we gotta do the finding of fact on it, so. Okay. Just, and then you're gonna be back, phase three would be for the solar panels?
Solar, we have a approved permit for the solar.
Okay.
Yep.
So that could go in long before any of those hangers ever get built?
It will, yeah, that summer will, that construction will begin in a few weeks.
Now, is the fence gonna get moved closer to the road?
It has to be, yeah.
Yes, right, they get to make room for the panels.
Right.
Anything else? Would the planning board like to have a site visit of this, do a walkthrough?
It's a good idea.
We have the right to do that, and Jeremy's made the great offer.
I'd get up for a walk any day.
Okay. That will become an official board function, and we do, I believe, have to have at least 10 days' notice, maybe 14 days' notice for the town, if we're gonna have a site visit. If there's more than three of us, three or more of us.
What the planning board did in the past is just before the, the planning board meeting, they met a half hour or so before, we'll be there for, to start the official meeting.
That makes sense. Okay, would that work for you guys?
Sure.
5 o'clock on the tent? Site visit?
Let's do a vote, all, can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we do a site walk.
Okay.
On the half hour, half hour, five, whatever we need to, before the next planning board meeting, whatever that is.
It's been moved. It's moved and seconded, we have a site visit at, you wanna say 5 or 5:15?
5:15.
Which?
45 minutes would be enough.
Because we, it's not a long walk.
Where should we meet?
We meet at the terminal.
A site visit. And.
Need at the terminal?
You need at the terminal.
Oh, we have to go down.
Yes.
You gonna serve cocktails?
The restaurant may be open.
Free trips to Paris?
One-way ticket.
One-way ticket.
Halfway. All those in favor?
I know, I can't.
Practice it.
Did you?
Yeah.
Did you need to end this?
You need to end this.
I show my shoulders.
Thank you very much for your time.
Bob, why did you have two sets of copies, you're only dealing with one now?
The original copy was just to show you what the original application was.
That's right, one was 22.
The second one shows you.
One was 23. Okay.
Just so you can compare notes, showing that nothing was changed, just literally.
Okay.
We just removed the hangers.
I looked at it, and that's why I didn't see that different.
It's 8 o'clock, and we do have some time, if you want, to discuss bylaws. And I presented you with some stuff. It's not something that we have to get done right away, but I'd like to keep chipping away at it until we do that.
I have a question. You gave us something called Planning Board Rules.
Yes.
How does that dovetail with the bylaws? There's one thing it has, the board shall be regulated on the first Monday of each month. It says that in the Planning Board Rules.
Right. What? Do you want us here? Where's the one?
You want it?
Do you want it?
I've got it.
Here.
But, yes, I've got that copy, but I have one all marked out. And what I did was I went to this block and took these out of the block.
Yes, out of that?
Yes, it came out of that block. And then I went through and I said, well, we want it on the second Monday, and we want it at 6 o'clock, and it says in there that we're gonna have a group of four or five board members, and we only have three. So there's, there are corrections in there. What I was trying to do was to get you basic information for concepts. Do we want to have this in, in our own words, or using these words, but have them at the correct time? Do you want to have the chairman, shall decline all votes? If members doubt the vote, and on and on? Do you want that order system of adjourn and previous questions, or laying on the table, postponing to date certain? Do you want or need all of that stuff?
I want it as simple as possible.
Yes.
So are you suggesting that we take some things out of the Planning Board Rules and put them into bylaws and just have one thing?
I, I am not suggesting that you do anything, I'm offering this as an option. If you felt strongly that a certain thing in this should be in our ordinance, in our bylaws, then bring it out. If you think there's something in our bylaws that should be taken out, bring it to our attention. And so I gave this to you, at least a month ago, I think, with the idea that you'd look it over and say, this makes sense to us, or it doesn't. If it doesn't, just scratch it out, that there's nothing sacred about it. Looks like you've done some work.
In terms of rules.
I was confused. You know, I was just gonna say, Mr. Harper, these are rules that the main municipal association suggests, so if you didn't have your own bylaws, you could just say, oh, we're gonna follow what MMA suggests. Alles had adopted their own bylaws, but you can, you know, and that's, we're trying to update them, you know, we've been working on that, but we have this resource, maybe there's some good ideas here that haven't been considered in the last six years or 10 years or whatever. So that's all that Bob did, is he pulled them out of the MMA Planning Board manual as a resource.
Well, I think that's great, but I think ultimately, it's confusing to have both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We will not have both, we'll have one set. Excuse me, just a second. Sir? Sir? Are you here to present something to us?
No, he's here with me.
Oh, okay.
I'll move.
No, 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 you're fine.
I have to take off.
We just did, well, you had a set of plans there.
No, no, it's my pleasure, I can carry it all.
Yeah, we didn't need one other thing. So, given that we've had a busy, busy night, if you don't want to go any further tonight.
I'd like to.
Okay. But take what you've got of our bylaws and that, and see what makes sense. That's, that's why I'm.
I need to go through it, I may have some notes.
Yeah, and I'll go through it again. And again, you know, if the dates are wrong, fix them. But they, again, because it came out here. Is there anything else to be brought before this board?
I have none.
I will be glad to entertain a motion.
I made the motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
You know what? It's approved and? Seconded twice. All in favor? Meeting is closed. And thank you all very much.
Okay, we get stuff that logs through.
Yes, we can.
We have a caution of these.
We gotta log this stuff back home again, I'll leave it here.
Yeah, what do we do with it?
Well, you can return the envelopes.
Yes, I got, I'm leaving it.
Do you want any of that stuff to take home, do it?
No, I'm just wondering if we're gonna deal with it again, I don't have to have somebody, you know, bring it again.
Exactly. We're gonna have to deal with it.
Okay, no, just take it. Keep looking.
Yeah, so I'll collect the envelopes. We gotta get out of guard.